United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is board business, bills and payroll.
There's some people coming around and then the Turkey Lane lot release that you voted last meeting. Do you need your signature on that?
There he goes, Z.
An E.
E. I think I'm going to have a new signature for next year. Start the new year off right. I'm going to be just the same.
I think we're resigning this year, at the end of this year.
I gotta go into next year.
Ten days, if you want to.
Somebody has to show up.
So that's what you're...
I'm encouraging you not to resign at any time, but to complete the five years that he was elected to.
Oh, I don't know about that. We'll have to see how the ratings are. If my ratings slip, maybe I will resign.
Your rating?
TB, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's right. This is the Martin Arri show.
I don't think so.
All right. So then we have to take a vote for a bond release for Wilson Lane, the shared residential driveway, which has been completed, so we're looking to... They have requested the release of the funds to the developer. Job's done. No comment from the town engineer, correct?
Correct. No questions or concerns?
Do we have a way to make sure everybody gets paid, or it's not our problem?
Well, we only have one option, to release it to the developer.
And to make sure everybody does or doesn't get paid.
Okay.
I'll take a motion.
I like the motion that we release the... What is it, 26,000?
All remaining bond funds.
All remaining bond funds, 26,500. Is that what it is? Or plus interest?
Plus interest.
To...
Carter Scott.
To the developer.
Can I get a second?
Oh, you need me again? Second?
All those in favor?
Aye. Do I have to sign this?
Um, no. I'll do it. That's just the draft.
Okay. You'll sign for me? Thank you. You're too good.
Appreciate it, though.
That was quick.
All right. Five minutes ahead of schedule, so 7:10. Why don't you get them and pass them around? Maybe everybody in the audience...
I tilted to see who wanted, and I got a bunch of those. Would you like some?
Well, now that we have five. Take two, they're small.
We'll say no to chocolate.
All right. Good for you, young lady.
Why don't you just pass them around?
This star and the one that has a G on it.
I want... That one I went back. I'll just make you bet tomorrow, Mark.
Oh, you want to do that one? No, we just have to sign it, and we have to go on then.
You know, this could be bad. I ate one that's not on it.
We've received assurances that we would have a full board tonight, so...
We're just, um... We sent that driver.
Traffic was heaven.
It was.
Is it really?
All right, that's what... Because I heard we were just going to get some flowers. Rain on Saturday, and maybe some snow. I just saw somebody said, "Oh, boy, you know, commute to one's going to be horrible. It's supposed to snow all the hell out for a month." Maybe they can find that.
Mark, would you like to collect the chocolate?
Oh, sure.
See, she's not 35 yet, so she can still have one.
So what time scheduled for the rest of them? Might as well talk about that. When are we meeting again?
On Wednesday, January 10th, we have the senior residential development bylaw summit. And then on Thursday, the 11th, we have a regular planning board meeting. That would be it for January. February would be Thursday, February 1st. That's what works for everybody.
February 1st is good. Good for you, Peter, the first?
Everything's good with me. I just love life. It's a beautiful country. It's the people who are so great.
What did you get, the happy... The happy cookie over there?
I got the happy... I told you it wasn't in there. It was marked on the... I love what I eat. Christmas spirit. Got to be happy.
You just have to stretch for a couple more minutes.
Wow.
Can you magic? How about a puppet show?
I know that, uh...
Oh, here goes, Mr. Juggle.
Oh, he can. There you go.
I'm good. Been juggling you guys on this board long enough.
He can only shoot at it, that's all he can do. He can't juggle them.
Like God, like mentality level you've got going there, it's not a scam. Like God? So... Catch? Apple, too? Do you want one? If you don't eat, we throw it to you later.
How are you? Put you down there.
You're in Littleton, too?
Ladies and gentlemen?
Good evening.
Okay.
We have one minute till we open the hearing.
Do I have a chance to apologize for Thursday?
You do.
Do I have the floor?
It is yours.
Okay. I want to apologize to absolutely everybody here and to my board, fellow board members, for missing last week's meeting on Thursday night. It's the first time that's happened to me in the 11 years I've been on this board or any other board that I can remember. And it was unfortunate, and whatever I could do to make it up for the troubles that people went through, I'll do. Just let me know. And my sincerest apologies to everybody.
Bye dinner, no more comments.
Just vote yes.
Did you say anything? You said anything?
Dinner, sure.
Oh, I would have gone with the no comments and the hell with the dinner.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead.
We go by Verizon time with that clock? That clock's good enough?
All right.
7:10. Reopen the public... Continue public hearing, request any comments. Workers Credit Union. Special permit consolidated decision. Agafor Water Resource District Special Permit. Major Commercial Industrial Use Special Permit. Overlay District Water West Beaverbrook Area Special Permit. Setback Special Permit. And Site Plan Review and Stellon Stormwater Management.
Second.
Anything need to be read from the last time, or we're good? All right.
All right, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good evening. Douglas DeShane, representing Workers Credit Union. I do want to thank you all for making a special appointment for us this evening. It is greatly appreciated. I know your time is tight. What I'd like to do then is just give you a quick overview of where we are and what's occurred since we did last meet and you accepted a presentation. I'm happy to report that the Conservation Commission did vote to issue us an order of conditions for the project. I will tell you that the commission was great in working with us, but that my clients have also really stepped up to do a lot of restoration and redevelopment of some of the buffer zones and wetland areas, resource areas on the site, including eradication of invasive species. So from an environmental standpoint, the project is going to do some great things for resource areas out there and for the town in general. As you know, we have received a final peer review comment letter from Green International. You will see that that letter represents that we have satisfied nearly, well, all of their requirements and conditions. We've made the changes they've asked for, and we've provided them the additional information. They have, however, as is typical, proposed a number of conditions as part of the decision. We've reviewed those and are comfortable with them and have no issues with respect to those conditions. Most of them you'll see are standard things that we see all the time. We met, I met with Deputy Chief Clancy from the Fire Department, as well as Deputy Chief Patterson from the Police Department, to review the entranceway and our proposed access and egress points. You'll recall, we have three proposed. They were both happy with those, comfortable with them, although they both agree we need all three, especially for the fire trucks. It gives them easy access, easy in and out, easy turning. So they were acceptable of those. In fact, Deputy Chief Clancy said that he was going to go back and review it with his public safety officer, and that if he had any issues, he would give back to me, but that at that point, they were happy. They did not give back to us, so I'm assuming they are still comfortable with the project. Brian Gudrow, our engineer, as you know, has been in contact with the Water Department and has discussed the adequacy of water for the site, and there are no issues there. And they have also indicated that they were going to review whether, in fact, they were requiring or would require monitoring well. And Brian, I think the indication is that...
That they're given the use and given the area, they're mostly not going to require monitoring wells on site.
And although we did not get back to us today with a definitive answer, we might suggest the board consider a condition that says that we will adhere to and complete any monitoring wells required, which we are certainly willing to do. Lastly, I do, you know, I have discussed with my client your policy or regulation requiring contributions with respect to parking spaces. In this particular case, as you know, it's a redevelopment, so there are already spaces there, but we are, in fact, providing an additional 36 spaces. So we do understand that there would be an associated $3,600 contribution as part of that, and my clients are accepting of that. We have also, as you may recall, we did meet with the crosstown connect people about their activities in town, and my clients have... Are committed to working with them when the time comes to be part of that. It sounds like an amazing program. If we could get, you know, commuters from the train station to our facility, that would be an amazing benefit. However, we've also learned and understand that the town itself is looking to put together a van pool program, and my clients would like to participate in that. They would like to propose to the board to consider a $10,000 contribution in total. So that would include the $3,600 for the parking spaces, and the balance we would ask to be earmarked specifically to your van pooling program. My clients not only want to participate here in helping, but they are hoping that van pool would benefit their facility. So they would ask that that money be earmarked for that program and that they be involved with that program as it comes to be. They see that as a real benefit to them as well. Again, the commuting and getting your employees to work for public transportation is a key thing. So we would offer that or ask the board to consider accepting that as a total contribution and satisfaction of the parking, and also a contribution to this new van pool program, which they would like to participate in.
Okay.
I think, I've been through my notes, gentlemen, I think we've, if not in previous meetings subsequent, have addressed your questions, have provided you information. The plans have been updated and provided to you as Brian was working with the peer reviewer, and I think you have the final... You have, I know you have all of the final plans. So at this point, we are happy to answer any questions you might have, provide you any additional information you may need, and would certainly ask for your consideration granting the requested permits.
Okay. Thank you. Well done. Comments?
My only comment is that I think that's great about the money in lieu of the parking. We've talked about starting a fund like we did with the... Like we used to do with the sidewalks, to start asking the developers to, in lieu of the waivers that they're asking for, give us some monetary funds so that we can start funding this, the connection that we're going to have in town and the van that the seniors have been using. So that's a great... I think that's a great way to start this off again, and I thank you guys for stepping up to the plate on that. It's my only concern. I think everything else is fine. I'm happy with it.
It does say, you had mentioned something about water testing?
Groundwater monitoring wells. Correct.
Says one of the conditions, says semi-annual groundwater monitoring activity shall be required to help assess land use impacts on local groundwater resources. Very first sentence, and conditions which I assume are part of the...
So condition number one is a standard condition that the board uses for all Agafor and Water Resource District Special Permits. I think the only change I would recommend is, third line down, it says, it says two new groundwater monitoring wells. It just would put any groundwater monitoring wells that the Light and Water Department deems are necessary that way. In the future, if, for example, the use changed on this site, then at that point, if the Water Department recommended wells to be installed, then they could be required to install them.
It's boilerplate. It's boilerplate that we use all the time. Including the no sodium deicing and, you know, that kind of stuff.
I know some of those things are... I mean, how often have you gone to check out who the guy that does the sanding doesn't throw salt down? It's rare that somebody will go on a job site and sand and not get one of them out of the shop, you know?
It's become a little more standard for us, but in general, I agree, but some of the larger sites have done a very good job of making sure.
The point made a point of it.
Yes.
Well, that's what I'm looking for, that they have, make sure that somebody knows that that's what goes in it, because they do a driveway across the street, and then they come over and do you guys, and so, you know, salt and sand you, and it's salt. It's just that there's so, there's so much water there, I would almost want to see a monitoring well put into dialogue, whether the Light Department wants it or not, even if it's just one in the worst place it could possibly somewhat affect. But if the Light Water Department says you're good, you know, I can't... I'll go with them. They know more about it than I do, but I personally would like to see one better than that. I'm pretty happy with it, and again, I apologize for having to come back for extra meetings also. I'd like to...
Good. I think the project looks good, and I'm okay with the, most of the site concepts. Now, the existing building, we're not going to... How much renovation are you going to be doing to the, to the face of that? To the appearance of it?
The existing building...
Well, there it is.
...can be completely reskinned.
It'll be reskinned, okay.
So when construction commences, the existing facade will actually be completely removed. So all that will remain will be the concrete slab, the concrete deck on the second floor and the steel superstructure.
Okay.
That steel superstructure and slabs will be extended, and an entirely new building envelope will be placed on there.
Is there any reason why you went with brick when our town code is asking for, for materials that would fit the neighborhood, like clarebirds? And you've got some cornices there, but is there, is there a reason not that you have gone away from our, the points in our bylaw?
Well... I think most importantly for Workers Credit Union is just use the corporate image, the corporate image they're trying to achieve for the global brand, that it's not only a function of this particular site, but also the branch locations throughout Massachusetts.
Yeah. Because the, one of the things that our bylaw was, was asking is, I had it up here, I had it, and I was going to read it to you, but I'm sure you've read it. Yeah. It, it wants, it wants you to be sensitive to the neighborhood and sensitive to the town, you know, oh, what are the words I'm looking for?
Character.
Character, that's it. Yeah. And, you know, in a building like that, looks, looks like something that you'd see in a mall, an old-fashioned mall. Newer buildings have much more interesting facades, and that's one of the things that our bylaw is requesting, is to, is to have, I wish I could find a thing, but it's, it talks about having a more interesting facade.
Well, Mr. Crowley, I, you know, I, we did read that, and actually, my clients did take that into significant consideration at the time. And as Matthew mentioned, you know, first and foremost, and I'm sure you can understand this, they are concerned about their corporate image and being consistent with the corporate image that they have projected throughout the state. Additionally, as you know, we are in a commercial zone, and so when we look to...
Oh, yeah.
...our zone and our neighborhood, as you mentioned, although I think the bylaw talks about consistency with the zone, not as much the neighborhood, we are in a commercial zone, and as you know, the point is as well. And if you look at the point, you'll see that we have actually done a reasonable job of trying to stay consistent while maintaining the corporate image they want in terms of some of the roof designs and cornices and things. We are, in fact, consistent with what you see at the point. And with all due respect, sir, we do kind of feel that this is a, a modern view of a traditional... We are a banking institution, very traditional, and yet we feel that we've done a good job of modernizing that traditional look and in keeping with our corporate, you know, our corporate goals and branding. I will agree, and we can't otherwise admit, that across the street, there is a separate zoning district, which is residential.
That's right.
And we can't in any way, shape, or form achieve the corporate goals and, quite frankly, a commercial building and make it look more like a home. It's not going to happen, and it can't. I guess I just, I'd just say we felt that we really did try and be consistent with our zoning district and our neighbors, and we do feel our buildings will melt quite nicely with the point and what you've achieved there. And we all agree that what's there today is far from that. So we, we did actually, I just want you to know, we did, in fact, take all of that into consideration. But I also will admit, first and foremost, we had to maintain our corporate identity that they have projected throughout the state. We couldn't, you know, go outside of that.
And if I might add too, sorry, Doug. You know, part of it is also, we worked with the architect, and one of the first things we said is it has to look like it belongs not only in Littleton, but in all the areas. So, so they did studies of all the local buildings around the area, and, and they came up with this, as they thought this was the best way to... You know, there are other buildings which are, you know, much, much more significantly different than this one. We thought this one blended in nicely with the community and everything else, so that's one of the reasons why we did this.
Yeah, I think the cornices are great, much towards, towards the goals of our zoning.
Yeah.
And the, but, but there's, there's massing there, and it looks, and the brick has done nothing to break up the massing. And that's one of the things that our goal's tried to achieve, is to, is to achieve less massing by, and there's lots of different ways of doing it. Peaks, we were looking at, you know, peak roofs of some sort, maybe a, you know, a mansard along the edge. I don't know.
Well, they're going to get into trouble with restricted height, height levels and not the snow ones.
The building itself right now is brick. It's modernistic brick. It's not very attractive. The residents have lived with that for 35 years.
I couldn't disagree more, Richard. I think that building, as designed, is excellent. I think it's a beautiful-looking structure, and it's much better than what's on the site.
I like the one that's on the site.
Here's the paragraph, that I found the paragraph. It says, "Building design shall incorporate features to add visual interest while reducing appearance of bulk or mass. Such features shall include various varied facades, roof lines, roof heights, materials and architectural details." The planning board, and then it goes on, "Plan board may consider blah, 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 height and so forth." And then it continues. "Buildings shall relate to the pedestrian scale by including appropriate architectural details and visual interest along the ground floor facades that face the streets, pedestrian pathways, parking lots, or other significant things. Articulating the base middle-top facades separated by cornices, string cornices, stepbacks, et cetera." So, so it's... It's not there.
Well, but it is.
I would disagree, I would disagree with you, Richard.
If we could take those one by one, from a materials perspective, we'd... If we could take those one by one, from a materials perspective, we do have varying materials, we do have some concrete, would be textured concrete at the bottom, we've added lentils to the windows, we certainly have brick, which in most municipalities we've, you know, we've come across really encourage the brick facades, they prefer it. One of the things we've tried to do is steer away from your traditional ribbon windows to add some architectural features to the building.
Plunched windows.
With the punched windows, precisely. We have added, I think, a nice roof feature. We've tried to add varying roof heights with these added features to the building on each facade. And we've actually stepped back the building, we have not squared it off. And you'll see that here, various distances from the road. We have added the pedestrian paths and connectivity to the site.
Oh, I saw that, yeah. And that's, that's great.
From existing sidewalks.
Yeah, absolutely great.
With respect to the roof, I do just want to touch base that, or touch upon the fact that we are trying to save the superstructure.
Yeah.
And it's a very important piece of this. This is not a complete ground-up redevelopment.
Right.
So, we do have a lot of restrictions with respect to the existing superstructure and what you can and can't do. And what's important there is that the existing roof line is going to be preserved, that deck is going to stay.
Yeah.
So, these are significant elements, we think, from an architectural perspective, to add details so you don't end up with just a traditional square box.
Was there any way you can add some faux details to break up the massing?
I mean, I feel as though we have, we have done that with what we have here.
Just on those...
We have significant elements here at the front entry.
I see that, yeah.
We have this here, this is actually a faux third floor, to create some visual interest with respect to height and with respect to the actual distance and step back from the street.
I see that, 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 that actually is, fits right in.
I'm sorry, when you say a faux third...
There is a, this, this element here, there's actually not a third floor to the property.
Is there a roof on that?
Oh, there is, yes. There's a roof.
Because we had some faux windows put on a job that kind of looked like crap, and I know other way to put it, and I don't want to see...
No, no, they're real windows, real, real roof, real walls.
There's just no room there.
It just is no office in there, there's no living...
Nice two-story entry.
It's a two-story entrance, it's cathedral, yes.
All right.
If I may jump in there for a second, that other picture you showed down that you pulled out, maybe you...
This is the branch location out front.
This is the branch location out front, which is going to go further down the street, you see.
Correct. Closer to the intersection, the intersection of the point building.
I just think it's a wonderful renovation to the existing building that was out there that's not very attractive. I differ with Richard, I think there's a lot of interest. It's brick, brick is a colonial product that we see throughout the town. I think they've done a phenomenal job with what they have there, revitalizing it. If you, if you looked, you can see from the front of that building, the point right there, it's in keeping with what's up at the point.
Can we ask some questions?
We'll, we'll open it up to the public in a moment here.
My point is, I think they've done a, a great job with trying to meet the bylaw as we, as it's presented to us.
If I can, I, I think, I think we, the main building that you're speaking of, I think we can, we can do, deal with that very well. One question I might throw in, you said you had some concrete detail at the base of it.
They show it here as well.
No, no, not, well, here's, we'll start with the other building. Your lentils, are they concrete or are they going to be granite? Can we make the bottom ones granite also, where you talked them concrete? Is that even, even a faced granite? You know where I'm talking about, where you, you pointed out these bottoms will be a textured concrete? Not there, on that one there. If you point, take your, your left hand, all right, your right one, keep going, yeah, right there, and go further to the left there, oh, go back a little bit, right there, that bottom. Is it, is that, you said that that was concrete. Is it possible for you to make that a granite facade down bottom instead of concrete? Even if it's two inches, nothing more than, than a skin on it, you know? That's a thought, I would like to see that as opposed, and I'd like to make sure, I think it'd go good with your granite lentils. So, I think that building is great, I think we can all live with that, wouldn't you, Rich? I mean, we can, we'll see how the neighborhood feels about it, but I think we can deal with that all right.
Yeah, well, let me, let me, let me...
Think about it.
Yeah.
Okay.
One more second, let me, I just want to read one more thing from our bylaw. It says, "External building, external building treatment shall relate to and be in harmony with surrounding structures. Piedmont wall materials shall have appearance of wood stucco stone painted or coated non-metallic finish. Predominant wall materials shall have the appearance of wood stucco stone, if painted, coated, only a non-metallic finish. Ground-floor commercial building facades facing streets or other significant pedestrian spaces shall contain transparent windows encompassing a minimum 40 percent." I think you've done well there. Wherever possible, let's see, the next thing, it says, "Any alteration or addition to existing historic or buildings shall employ materials, colors, textures, as well as massing size, scale, and architectural features that are compatible with the original structure," or just, this is if you're renovating an old building, "distinctive finishes." Now...
Historical buildings.
Yeah, that's, that, that applies to renovating a historic, we want to make sure that if you renovate a historical building, you don't butcher it. This, if, I would, I would certainly, I would certainly like to see some of the massing broken up on the, on the, those long horizontal sides.
Again, for the record, I have one thing, I disagree with them.
I just want to make sure we're being clear, because I, we deal with the massing and scaling issue all the time. As, as was pointed out, this building, this face, the face, the front of the building is stepped back one, two, three, four separate times over the course of that. So, it's doing this, and, and maybe this view doesn't, you know, from there, you look at this and you kind of see it as, but in fact, there is a significant jock here, there's one here, this structure, I mean, I...
Is there a...
I've never seen this much breaking up windows of this size, this whole front, I mean, Richard, I...
What about considering, what about considering a different color brick to help break up the massing?
See, we're, we're losing sight of the fact here that this is proposed to be the headquarters for this entity.
I understand.
There is a corporate identity and branding. I mean, they're a traditional banking, you know, facility. They're not going to build a modern, contemporary structure out here, just not in keeping with their, their brand, and certainly not their headquarters.
Richard, they're Workers Credit Union, they're a bank that came from working at the mill, the old mills in Clinton and everything else. This is trying to capture the mill aspect of what the outside of that building looked like in a modern way, which they've done. It looks like it's been there for 100 years, the bank wants to have some sort of semblance that it's, it's, it's been going on for a while, it's not a brand-new bank that just came here. It's supposed to look old and new and fit in the neighborhood, there are no other buildings around it, it's the only building. They've done, I think, a fantastic job juggling all the different aspects of it. It's old, it's a, it's a mill building that's been modernized and looks like, it's their corporate office, they've done a great job making it look...
What about, am I, I'm just asking, what about breaking up some of those stepbacks into different colors of brick?
No, that would be crazy, that would look, no, no, that would look crazy.
Or, or awnings of some sort.
Again, Richard, now you're trying to make it look like a mall.
No, no.
You can't, that is a beautiful building, it's a single use...
I don't, I don't dispute that, but in, in this location where you've got houses across the street, on the house, you've got, at the beginning of Russell Street, you start with three houses along 119.
This is not going to be a house, Richard, it's going to be, it's a commercial building now, an ugly commercial building now, it's going to be a lot nicer-looking commercial building when it's done. I think the residents will be more in favor of this with all the landscaping, everything else that they've done there than what they have there now.
Well, then, let's talk about the, the branch. If, if I, if I agree with, with this, can we at least get some, some of this architectural detail and some of these materials on the branch then?
Richard, yes, we can talk about it, I just want to, on this building, while we have some public interest here, I want to hear comments from any residents that'd like to speak on this particular building.
Okay.
Yeah. I'd actually just ask some questions.
When, sure, just state your name and your address.
Sure, I'm Dan Hurley, I live at 152 Russell. And just curious, I know we talked about it being a commercial building, what is the specific zoning application for the area?
Its own business.
Its own business, isn't it considered light industrial?
Industrial A.
We're industrial A.
Yeah, industrial A.
The, the uses are allowed in the district.
Yeah, I'm not disputing that, I'm just curious about it. And the reason I'm curious about it is all because I know you guys are concerned about the corporate image and that it's going to be a world headquarters, and of course, it's our homes. And I also hear the connection that the look of this matches the point. Well, I don't know that, that we would feel comfortable with bringing the point down the street to us, you know what I mean? I don't know if that's, I mean, is that the interest that eventually we just take it all the way down through Russell Street? No. So, if we look at the bottom picture, where we do have the bank in front and then we have this building behind it, I think they nailed it, that it does look like a continuation of the point, it does look like it's just coming right on down the road, and if that's what you guys want, that's what you guys want. I don't think that was the goal. I don't think it was the goal of the town's bylaws right now in trying to get things to look like the neighborhoods that they're in. And I know it's a renovation of an existing building, I agree, it's not the most beautiful thing in the world, but when you renovate buildings, you usually try to improve the world, not just sort of make it better than it was, you know, you're trying to do some good things. So, that's my thought, it looks like, looks like the point's coming, coming right down the road. And at some point, that means, you know, we, we're all going to say, or many people in town are going to say, you know, since my kids get out of high school, I'm gone, so I'll take my tax money and leave at that point. We've got to keep a little bit of what this place is to us.
Thank you, any other comment?
Yeah, Mary Marcuselli, I live at 164 Russell. I agree with Dan, I don't necessarily like the idea of point creep, where all of a sudden the point starts to creep down Russell Street. My comment is mostly towards the corporate identity comment. I've lived in Littleton for about 15 or more years now, but previously, I grew up in Cape Cod, and the McDonald's down there on the Cape, they are all subject to the local planning aesthetic. And so, I don't know if any of you have been down there, but if you notice the one on 28, it looks like a Clavard house. And if you look at some of the other ones around the Cape, they all look like residential buildings. And I think McDonald's is a slightly larger corporate entity than Workers Credit Union. So, this discussion of we need to preserve our corporate identity, I hear what you're saying, but there's companies like McDonald's or Starbucks, for example, I was up in Alaska, historic district, beautiful old building, Starbucks little logo on it, they didn't do anything else to the building, they just had their Starbucks in this beautiful historic building. I like the idea of mills, I think mills in Massachusetts are gorgeous buildings. I don't necessarily, if you ask me if that looked like a mill, I would not necessarily say that looked like a mill at all. My family managed a mill up in Lowell, so I just, it, this is better than what's currently there, but I really think that maybe you should try to do what Mr. Crowley is saying and make it just look a little more hometown-friendly, residential. I have clavard on my house, I'm smack dab across the street from this bank, so, thank you.
There's a difference between the McDonald's down the Cape, it's a 5,000-square-foot entity with one floor and everything's right there, it's easier to, to build something of that size and accommodate it to the, to the residential neighborhood, same thing with Starbucks.
But it's just the skin of a building, the inside, I, I, it's easy to build a small building, and it's harder to build a larger building, but the skin is just the skin.
So, again, you know, you can, see, it's just my issue, to be quite honest with you, you know where, where you live? It used to be Lancer Stables, and they used to run horses around there with, with the two...
Sulky racing track, Governor's Horse Guard, I hear that.
And I used to take my four-wheeler and my truck, and I drove around it in the snowstorms, and I got it stuck up to the doors, and it was a lot of fun, you know, probably your living room was where I was stuck. And, you know, when that place got built, across the street was, was a commercial entity, you know, it was a commercial property, it was, that's the way it was. Now, these people are trying to make a nice-looking building, and granted, is it what you want to look, would I like to roll over and look on it? Maybe not. But again, that's, that was there before you were there, that property has always been, you know, assessed at, at that use. And I think if we can just try and work together, and get, you know, we're trying to make sure that their lights don't shine in your, your front yards, and it's not a bad entity because they're a nine-to-five company, it's not, it's light industrial, is that correct?
It's, it's owned industrial A.
Industrial A. So, there's a number of things that could go in there, a lot worse than what we got, than what they're proposing. Now, and my last statement is, is going to be, I'm not wild about the, the smaller building, I think that we can make it look a little nicer so it doesn't look like exactly the sprawl that they're speaking of, you know? I think we can change that building a little tiny bit, it's not going to kill your architects, it's not going to add money to your, to your bottom line, but the build, the big building, I'm, I'm happy with it, to be quite honest with you, the cornice will look nice, the granite pieces, and I think we can, I, I, I don't have a problem with that. So, and, but again, ma'am, I realize that you're, I realize it's your home, so...
I would like to just remind the board of a couple things. First of all, there is currently an approval for this branch location site for not only a, a, a bank branch, but a 5,000-square-foot retail site. Those approvals are already in place, and I would, I would challenge you to suggest that those buildings that are already approved for here are, are nicer or more in keeping with your bylaw than this. So, you know, we're actually taking a site that's been approved for other buildings and more retail and everything else, and we're reducing it.
Right.
I, I think it's imperative that you have to consider, we are not in a commercial district, we're an industrial A district. And let me remind you what could be proposed here. Vehicle retail sales, you could have a car dealership across the street, and I can tell you right now that the car dealerships are not going to look, they're not going to be built to this quality.
Hold one moment, hold one moment.
Wholesale warehousing distribution center, allowed use here. What would a 60, 70,000-square-foot warehouse look like? Manufacturing, truck terminal isn't allowed use on this side. Self-storage facility isn't allowed use on this side.
We don't need to be scared.
I'm not scared, Richard, I'm just saying reality.
Yes.
These people want to do an amazing thing here, and if they can't build this building, they're not going to locate their headquarters in this town, and you're going to be stuck with a site that the next thing you know, there's going to be a car dealership or a warehouse proposed.
All right, one sec, we know, we know that, we know that those uses can be, can be done, and, and as far as I'm concerned, I think, I think I could live with what you have there if we can work with the branch. The branch is where, is the first thing people are going to see when they turn the corner and go up that neighborhood.
Doug's right, it could have been a 7-Eleven, it's a lot nicer than a 7-Eleven over there.
Yeah.
And, wait a second, we, we...
I said yes.
When we, when we zoned it, remember when we did the overlay? This piece was added to the overlay, it didn't have to be, it could have stayed the way it was. Everybody in the town of Littleton wanted to revitalize that whole area, and the town, townwide voted to put this little sliver as part of the overlay.
So, listen, I'm, I'm okay with this now.
Okay.
Provided, provided we can, we can add more trees and more when we, when we do the landscaping, all right?
Did you want to speak to him?
If I may.
Please. Can you just, there's some people here who don't know who you are, so...
I'm Joe Knox, I'm a member of the Board of Selectmen, I'm speaking as a town resident right now. I was eating supper, watching on TV, and I just want to express my concerns that, how happy that I am and many, many of the boards are that, that the Workers Credit Union has, has decided, or hopefully decided to move into town, and I just don't want to see this be held up because of, of just the aesthetics and the outside. I might not agree with, with the whole thing, you know, how it looks, but I have taken a close look at it, and you might call it scare tactics, but it is true that something else could go in there that would look a lot worse than, than this would, and we have a chance to have a good neighborhood in town. So, once again, I'm speaking as individual, I have talked to certain members of the boards, and they, and they share the same concerns I had.
No, I think that everybody I've talked to is... No, I think that everybody I've talked to is, is very much in favor of having the credit union come in. It's, um, and I think if we can, I think I'd be okay with that.
Probably, we will agree to work with you. We have actually committed to work with the neighbors and have committed to provide additional landscaping and trees for some of the neighbors across the street. And I know workers is committed to working with them or any other neighbors and with this board for landscaping.
Provided, provided we can do something with the branch.
Dan, in the back, I want to give you an opportunity to speak. You had something you wanted to say.
Just briefly, I very much appreciate all this discussion about how good it is to have them coming to town. I do not appreciate the entire representation of how bad it could be. And I see him shaking his head because...
I'm reading from your bylaw, sir, that's all. I'm not threatening. I'm just telling you what your bylaw allows as a matter of branch.
It just, in an overall approach of working with the neighborhood to first tell us how bad it could be if it weren't the great savers, it's not very kind to us and it's not very cooperative.
I'll get to you, Doug.
Gee, I was pretty patient for a long time.
Go ahead.
Sir, with all due respect...
No, Doug, let him finish, let him finish.
Oh, I thought he was finished. I'm sorry.
Nope. And I appreciate your thoughts that you would work with the community and the residents. I'm not sure I'm feeling that love right now. And it is great that it's not going to be a car dealership, although we all know now it wouldn't be a car dealership of all things. But I guess we just feel like we would like to feel that we did have involvement as the residents and the community so that we do not become part of the parking lot of the point. And if, we all know that traffic and speed on Russell Street have really gone off the rails. If this first piece of it, this is the entryway, this is the gateway, if it looks like the point, it is the point parking lot and they're doing lock fire down the road. If it can make it look like it is Russell Street, then we can get a handle on what happens as it goes down the road where our kids go to school, where our kids walk to school. We put in the sidewalks so the kids can get there. And if we can make it Russell Street and make it not the point, that would be really cool. I see the tower in order to get an aesthetic look, and I hear that it's not even a functional office, but we are gaining more building height because of that. I, I see a lot of effort to get the Workers Credit Union image, but not a Russell Street image.
Thank you. Doug, go ahead.
I'd just like the record to reflect that my clients, the first thing they did when we decided to come here to town and to file was to notify each and every one of our neighbors and invite them to a private meeting where we provided an opportunity as well as refreshments. We brought in our engineers, our architects, representatives from Workers Credit Union, and we invited all of our neighbors to come to that meeting where we could present this to them and to take their feedback and their thoughts and concerns and potentially address them prior to going through this process with the board. I will say that a number of our residents chose to attend that meeting. And based on that, we took input. We actually made changes based on their input. And that's where we agreed to provide additional landscaping and buffering to those neighbors. To the neighbors that were unable to attend, I followed up with another notice saying that, we're sorry you were unable to attend, but please feel free to contact me directly if you would like a private meeting to discuss the project. So I, I just want the record to reflect that Workers Credit Union went above and beyond to offer itself and this project before completing this process. Following those meetings, as you know, gentlemen, we have been here before you for a number of months, public hearings, our neighbors have been invited to attend, they've been given written notices to attend. We've had the same multiple meetings with the Conservation Commission. Again, the neighbors have invited to participate. So to imply that we're, you know, here for the first time offering to work with neighbors and threatening, I, I take, you know, I, I really take that to heart. I don't, it's just not true. And, and we have reached out to our neighbors. We've, we've done everything we can. And this plan actually reflects changes from those meetings requested by neighbors.
Terrific.
Of course.
I'm not threatening anyone, gentlemen. We have been at this quite a while.
There's one more gentleman.
Mark Donio, 150 Russell Street. I guess I'm, I'm not a neighbor, because I don't recall getting invited to anything. I, so it is a nice building and I'm, we're certainly happy to have this in town. I just want to, one, support you. I think you're right with the assessment of being part of the neighborhood and really want us to embrace it and be happy that it's there. And I do think there are some subtle things that could be done in a very cost-effective way to just break up the mass and make it look more of all the make it to the entryway of Russell Street, something I'm gonna drive by several times today. About, about the corporate image, I don't know much about Workers Credit Union, so I did a Google search and I looked for branch locations. There's a wide diversity of building branch locations, and I think there's some good architecture in those locations. And I think there is room within the corporate image to make a building that everybody is really happy and thrilled that is sitting on Russell Street.
Thank you. All right, so moving forward with the, um, branch location, can we pull that up on the answer there? Okay. Starting to my left. Mark, any comment on that structure?
I happen to think it looks nice. I like brick. I think it's well done. I don't think this is an extension of the point. I think it's, there's gonna be plenty of land all around it, you know, because most of it's not gonna be built on. I think they landscaped it nicely, put a lot of green space out there. I think the residents eventually will see that they, they did a nice job out there. I don't think you can architecturally change it that much. I think it looks, I think that looks fine.
I like this one too. I like that they put the parking in the rear. I think it's nice to have a front lawn there, so I definitely think it's an, an added feature to the neighborhood.
I don't like the big sign. I think maybe if you, it, will this, will those lower unit stanchions basically, you know, in between the large windows, will that be granted also to mirror the, the corporate building? Is that concrete?
It was just concrete.
Same as the corporate building?
It is.
And the cornices will be granite? Or the, uh, lintels, I'm sorry?
Lintels are granite. The top's concrete also. The, uh, this here.
That across the top is what? Is concrete?
Yep.
What if you made that, well, you know, the PVC, the plastic and used, uh, some type of, uh, cornice work on that, some, um, raised, you know, uh, crown molding and, and dental or something like that to break up, to, to break it up a little bit as opposed to just, and again, it's, it's probably less money than concrete. I just think it would just look a little nicer if it wasn't quite, you know, the, the midwestern thing. And, and again, like this woman behind you, I forgot her name, had mentioned about roof lines and stuff. And one of the ones that we, I thought we looked at beforehand. Doug, do you have the picture of the one that were the original building that we approved for over there? Which had retail and, and that stuff? I thought it had a pitched roof on it. It looked more, more like a cape-type looking thing. The, uh, the one across some dawnlands that, that Bob Moran put up though, it, it, it's not a bad-looking building, you know, it, it cheated in a few places here and there, but it's, it almost looks like a cape. You know, it's, it's not a bad-looking unit. And I think that would, might, and again, the, the main building I'm perfectly fine with, I really am. And this one here, it just for some reason, it almost looks like a midwestern, you know what I mean?
I do want to be clear, Mr. Chairman, the parking is in the front. We have wetlands to the rear, and so...
Am I looking at it backwards?
Yeah. Well, no, that was a rendering, that, this, the intention of this was a rendering of the building. You know, architects take some liberties with the surroundings and...
Well, they got me.
As you recall, no, but, but as you recall, we have, uh, this is all wetland.
Yep.
So we couldn't, we, we couldn't put the, uh, any paving back. We didn't want to push the building to the front because as you can see, we are proposing a significant landscape buffer to our neighbors. And just from a relative size perspective, this is a 2,000 square foot building. It may seem a little monumental on the picture, but it, you know, it's, it's actually literally the same size and smaller than some of the houses. So this, this is not a large building by any si, by any stretch of the imagination. I just want to be clear about that, that we...
Okay, thank you for putting that out.
But there is a significant landscape buffer proposed.
Okay, thank you.
I'll be done in a second.
One, are you, sure, go ahead, please.
Did these gentlemen see the original drawing that was for the bank? It was supposed, you talked of a Starbucks going in there and a coffee shop and, and a retail thing. Do you remember what that building looked like? You know, all right, you might not have been part of that, that game plan. So, it, it, it really looked, it looked nicer. It, it looked nicer than that. And if, I, I'm not sure this hinges on the approval of both sites as one for you guys to come in here, because I think you'd be great neighbors and really do it. And I like your, your attitude about everything, meeting the neighbors, applying for things and, and asking, you know? If you didn't go with the, another builder in town, well, better to do it and ask permission later, you know? I like the ask first. So I, I appreciate your, your honesty and candor in this, in this, in this event, but I would like to see the, uh, the, the, the bank branch itself look a little bit different than that picture. And, and again, your artist rendition may, it kind of looks, you know, not so much that, that I'd like to see us ease into the next building of sorts. Is that okay?
Richard?
Yeah. Oh, can't you please use like hardy plank instead of brick on this building? I mean, it's, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna,
I tell you what.
I'm not gonna be the one that, that nay, you know, nixes this, this whole project, but if, if you can, if you can please at least, uh, or stone or some, something, something other than brick. When, when Sam Park was doing his project, the first building in was the, uh, was the, uh, market basket. And I approached him and I said, "Sam, you know, we, we need, we need to have, we need to have this look like the, a town thing. Claveds and stone." And every other building after that was claveds and stone with nice cornices, nice overhangs. And, um, and it just, yeah, that's gonna be the face of the street, that building. As soon as you turn the corner, you're gonna, and, and that's, you don't want it to look like industrial, I'm, I live in town here. I don't want it to look like we're going down an industrial street. I want it to look like we're going down a neighborhood. And I, I can't thank you enough for the amount of green area across the front. That's wonderful. We're supposed to have parking in the back, but that amount of green area is just fabulous. So if we can just do something with the branch, please.
Do you think maybe we could try and tweak it a little bit? Would that be okay with y'all? And I realize that we, that we're kind of, I'm sorry.
You guys delay him, delay him, delay him, and then you go ask for changes. Kills me.
I didn't, I didn't delay it.
Oh, please.
Remember, we, we really appreciate you having this special meeting tonight, and I think one of the reasons why you accommodated us and it was so good to us was because we mentioned we have this 12/31 deadline. And, um...
And I'll take you for your word.
Why don't we do this?
No, no, don't, don't, don't. I want to, I appreciate that. One more time, Dan, it should be your last one.
Yeah, I'll be real brief. I apologize. I, I just feel like I got a little bit raked over the coals about not responding to previous invites tonight like Mark. Just a little perhaps. Don't recall any invite level in a second or additional. Maybe it's because 152 Russell Street took it down the road like Mark, he's right next door. I don't know. So, just so you understand why we didn't respond and, and not meant to be an insult that we had not. And, uh, and so we're expressing our, our, at this meeting, the best we can, as well.
I'm doing that. Okay. Thank you.
And, and we appreciate that, and I apologize for Doug. He, he didn't mean to say that. We, you know, we are a fine institution, right? So we are our community, right? So the worst thing they want to do is, excuse my language, piss everybody off by moving in, right?
You can say that, I do.
We're gonna spend, uh, excuse my language, a hell of a lot of money, right? To put that building there. And as we put that building there, one of the things that we talked to the town was, they were excited about it. You know why? Because that building also means, what is it, Bob? Two cops and a teacher? You know, so we, we are gonna do our best to be a great partner for the community. When our, we spent a lot of money on architects, what they did is they looked at all areas. They didn't mirror the point, right? But they also had to observe the point because they didn't want anything to clash with the point. Now, I'm not an architect. I don't know how the hell they could do that, but they did it, I think. And it's a beautiful building. Now, now, it's not perfect, and if, when we had these pictures, guess what? Bob voted against a lot, most of the buildings too, and I outvoted him, right? Because no one is gonna agree on, no one's gonna agree on it. You just have to look and say, you know what? The perfect is the enemy of the good. So just say, is this better than what you have now? If it, if it is, great. If it's not, then vote it down.
You're gonna get my vote at the end of the day. I'm just asking as, you know, if we can have that, that'll be the face of the street. If we can do something special with that building.
One of the things, it's not the face of the street. You got the locksmith as the face of the street.
I, I see that as the face of the street because it's, the locksmith is on the other side.
I think we talked about during landscaping.
I'm sorry.
I think we, we discussed it at landscaping. When you guys are ready to get going and you bring in a landscaping plan, I think if we do a lot heavier landscaping, give us an opportunity to look at some other options. From a landscaping standpoint, we can, we can soften the building with trees and bushes and things like that. Why don't we kind of,
I agree.
Have a leap of faith. They've done a great job. They've listened to what we've had to say. Approve it and then come back and take it, another look at it when the landscaping actually goes in. To look at how to soften everything with landscaping.
Appreciate that.
Can you live with that, Richard?
So, I'm, I'm looking for a vote to grant a special permit for the above conditions.
Something with the brick, at least in this one branch.
I'd make a motion to accept the, uh, the special conditions. Is that where, after, I forgot, I forgot the word.
You approve the special permit for the above conditions.
Yeah, with the conditions is outlined in the draft. Some of the conditions that are in the draft can now come out because they've been responded to. Who would just request that you have final wording to be approved by town council in case there's anything we need to finalize between now and when I file with town clerk. We can do that.
What she said.
Okay. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Say what I say. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Welcome to town and we will continue to work together.
And thank you for the debate. And citizens, we appreciate your input. It's just been a long time at this point, so sorry you got here late.
Yeah. We will be back to discuss the landscaping.
Yeah.
Do, do me a favor. Extend your mailing list a little bit and include the people that are sitting behind you. Take names and send them an invite for that, okay?
I was getting all these things certified, and, and I would have to leave work early to go to the post office. And I work in Boston, so it was getting to be, I mean, and we'd get these things to mail, and then they'd be for meetings that, you know, we would be away for. So, I don't mind getting the mailings. I just, you don't need to send them certified.
They have to buy...
They have to, though.
Okay, okay.
Anyway, so hopefully when we get...
No, okay.
When we get closer to work, and we'll be back here.
You could send two letters.
A whole bunch of Workers Credit Union.
They all look like houses.
This is the corporate location.
Look at the brown branch.
Gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Welcome to town.
Please consider that branch. Yeah. Thank you.
Make a motion to close the meeting.
Just a second. Are we all done?
We did enough. We made a motion. Do a second.
Let's just make sure, yeah.
Richard?
We got questions?
Aye.
Aye.